It's been started.
All right. Before we begin on the public hearing, I'd like to go over a few logistics on Zoom features and how this meeting will be run. In order to minimize background noise, I want, I please take a moment to make sure you are muted. We asked that everyone remain muted during the hearing to reduce back, to continue to reduce background noise. There will be an opportunity to provide oral testimony, at which point we will unmute those or ask you to unmute yourselves who wish to speak one by one. If you are joined online, please enter your name, affiliation, and email in the chat box located in the chat bar of the Zoom control panel on your computer, or at the top right of your mobile device by clicking the chat bubble icon. If you would like to testify, please type testify after your name and use the raise hand function of the Zoom. If you're having trouble finding the chat box in your computer, try clicking on the triangle to the left of the word chat to expand the bar. So then we'll also click to the next slide, which also shows the raised hand icon. If you're joined by phone, we will unmute callers one at a time after the presentation to ask for this information and to find an opportunity for you to testify. Do not use the chat function to provide written testimony under proposed regulation. So the hearing will now begin. This is a public hearing for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. My name is Joanne Moran, and I am the hearing officer for this matter. With me on the hearing panel is Michael Woodman. We are here today, Thursday, March 9, 2023, at 1:00 p.m. on an online public teleconference to accept testimony concerning the proposed regulation 310 CMR 7.02, Section 14, Cumulative Impact Analysis. At this time, Mass DEP will not be responding to any questions or comments regarding the regulation. If anyone wants to provide comments on the proposed regulation prior to the end of the public comment period on April 7, 2023, and needs interpreter services, Mass DEP provides language services to limited English proficient individuals free of charge. Information about these interpreter and translation services is available on the Mass DEP's website. The hearing is now open. Mass DEP has proposed amendments to Regulation 310 CMR 7.00, Air Pollution Control, to require a cumulative impact analysis, abbreviated by CIA, for comprehensive plan approvals for facilities located in or near environmental justice populations. The proposed CIA regulations are contained in a new section, 310 CMR 7.02, Section 14, and include enhanced public outreach to and involvement of environmental justice populations, assessment of existing community conditions, and analysis of cumulative impacts. Written testimony will be accepted till 5:00 p.m. on April 7, 2023. This is the date and time by which any written comments must be received by Mass DEP. It is not a postmark date. Please submit written testimony electronically to massdep.impact@mass.com. Or if you wish to submit written testimony on paper, please mail it to Joanne Moran, M-O-R-I-N, Mass, Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, 100 Cambridge Street, Boston, Massachusetts, 02114. Comments sent to any other address may not be received in time to be included in the official docket. In a moment, we will begin to unmute computer participants who have indicated they wish to provide oral testimony. Once all computer participants who have indicated they wish to testify have done so, we will call on the phone participants who wish to testify to identify themselves and ask them to present their oral testimony. To ensure all those who wish to testify are able, we ask participants to limit oral testimony to five minutes. Please speak clearly and distinctly. I will now open testimony. So I immediately see one person.
Present a good opportunity to kind of situate yourselves well for so not to look fairly at just being largely at what other
Who was the first person, who is the first person speaking?
Sonia Sax.
Sonia, did you start?
No.
I have not, no. Hi, everyone.
Who was speaking previously?
That was just some background noise, and I muted the participant.
Oh, okay, very good. All right. Would you like to start? I don't know if we pronounced your name properly and let us know your affiliation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, John. Good afternoon. My name is Sonia Sax, and I'm an environmental consultant at Epsilon Associates. And I'm just going to be providing some brief oral comments right now. We will be providing written comments. We anticipate that we will be performing CIA's for our clients. So the focus of these comments is really to provide Mass DEP some guidance. We really want to get a better understanding of the logistics and the details so we can advise our clients on proposing the best possible projects and to also provide them with some schedule certainty as they possibly invest in projects in the Commonwealth. So overall, I think the regulations, you know, are addressing a very important topic, which is environmental justice. But they do need to be more explicit. So we recommend that Mass DEP clarify several ambiguities, and I'll describe a few examples. Again, we'll be providing some written comments as well. So we'll expand on these in our written comments. So the Mass DEP should, for example, specify how the EJ indicators will be used in the context of permitting. So and and also maybe provide specific thresholds and how those thresholds, if they are exceeded, are what the implications might be. You know, we understand that it's important to provide the context for a certain area. But it's worth noting that a lot of these indicators, even if they are elevated, for example, if EJ screen notes that they're at the 90th percentile in relation to the rest of the state, this doesn't necessarily mean that there's a potential health implication. For some of the air pollutants like ozone or PM 2.5, an area might be in the 80th or 90th percentile when compared to the rest of the state, but the actual concentrations of those air pollutants in a certain area are, you know, they might be well below the health-based NACS. So those are things I think that are important to also provide some context. There's also some indicators where it's unclear where the data would be coming from. There's the, for example, the vulnerability indicators. Some of those are part of the DPH tool, but others are not. And we want to make sure that we know where we should be getting the best data to provide for those indicators. So some guidance that would be useful. And then with regards to the air modeling, you know, based on our professional experience, we do anticipate that facilities are going to have to, some trouble meeting air pollution thresholds for certain air toxics. That does not necessarily mean that it's because of actual facility emissions. It just might mean that the data that are available are indicating that there would be potential emissions. Sometimes that data are are old, they might be of poor quality. So we want to make sure that Mass DEP will be working with facilities to address some of those uncertainties. Again, we will be looking at the tools that are available and provide some guidance because I think it's it's needed for streamlining analyses. As I think everyone is aware, these analyses can be quite complicated and quite complex. So they will require a good amount of time to do. So if there's ways that we can streamline analyses, I think that that would be really beneficial. Lastly, there's, there's some mention of modeling of motor vehicle emissions, if these are significant, and we would require some clarity on what Mass DEP considers to be significant. The mobile source emission modeling also can get quite complicated. So we want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're addressing. And lastly, with regards to emissions from nearby sources, it would be nice to get some clarity on whether Mass DEP is going to be providing those emission estimates for other sources near the potential facility. And, you know, where where that data is coming from, I think, would be really helpful. So thank you for the opportunity to provide these preliminary comments. As I mentioned, we will be providing some written comments as well. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, Mike, I may not be able to see them. Do you see other, and Sonia could, yeah, there you go. Take your hand up. Oh, also Catherine Walker?
Well, I see next on the chat was Rosemary Weasel.
Okay, so Rosemary, we'll go to you next. Are you going to turn on your video? You don't have to, but it might be helpful.
Yes, I do have the video on, and I just unmuted. Yeah, my, my name is Rosemary Wessel. That's W-E-S-S-E-L. I'm with Berkshire Environmental Action Team in Pittsfield, Massachusetts. And thank you for addressing the issue of cumulative impact analysis. It's an issue that has real life and death consequences for at-risk communities. It's important that DEP takes into account all of the hazards affecting public health and safety in any community and not limit their calculations to just air quality. While the determination of an investigation of a specific proposed project would be for the levels of air pollution that would be deemed acceptable in a given community, that value can shift when other local harms are taken into account. A community that is already susceptible to illness from sources other than air pollution would be more deeply affected even by lower levels of air pollution that are usually seen as acceptable. A study of all public health risks should be done by DEP before any proposals are considered, building a catalog of pre-existing harms to vulnerable communities. It should also include not just historical pollution from existing sources, but be calculated on the nameplate maximum that could occur if said facilities were to operate at their full permitted capacity. It could be overlaid with available public health information from the Department of Public Health's vulnerable EJ criteria to help identify any areas that are already experiencing concentrations of health concerns that are likely to be caused by environmental factors. Having this database available in a similar format to the state's environmental justice populations map would help inform the decision-making process in critical ways. While the recent efforts of state agencies to engage in outreach to communities has been a welcome change, it is not going far enough to truly reach the community members most impacted by state policies. Hearings for public public comment periods like this, including this one, are held with very limited explanation of the policies or programs at issue. All comment periods should, at the very least, include a recorded webinar or print synopsis of proposals in everyday language that people of a diverse set of skills can understand, and in multiple languages, to help people grasp the issue at hand. These should be provided to community advocacy and other civic groups for easy distribution among grassroots stakeholders. It's our hope that DEP staff members working on these proposals will hold regional meetings in person where a presentation of this type of proposal is made by interactive, followed by interactive question and answer sessions. Thank you for the opportunity to provide verbal comments, and we will also be submitting more detailed comments in writing.
Thank you very much for your comments. Mike, can you tell who was next?
Yeah, Elliot Smith.
Hey, everybody.
Hello. And could you also say your affiliation?
Sure. My name's Elliot Smith. I'm a volunteer for Lynn Neighbor to Neighbor. So thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. I live in Lynn, Massachusetts, which is an environmental justice community. In Lynn, we have a lot of glaring sources of pollution. For example, we have the General Electric Plant. We also have the illegal sewage outfall on King's Beach on the border of Lynn and Swambskett, among other pollution sources. But the most concerning issue, in my opinion, is the Wind Waste Saugus incinerator and ash dump located just across the river from West Lynn. First of all, I understand that Mass DEP allows this incinerator to buy credits to offset, sorry, to offset their excessive NOx emissions. The state standard is 150 parts per million, but the incinerator currently emits at 185 ppm. In my opinion, this is unacceptable, and it's a health burden for the people of Lynn and surrounding communities. The oldest incinerator in the country should be held to the same standards as all the other ones without exception. Additionally, adjacent to the incinerator is the Unlined Ash Dump, which sits in the middle of the Romney Marshes, which is another great concern. This dump predates the incinerator. Beginning in the 1940s, it was a municipal dump and later became the, an ash landfill when the incinerator was constructed in 1975. This ash pile is the only remaining unlined landfill in the state. The ash is filled with dioxin, lead, arsenic, mercury, cadmium, and other toxic elements. I recently learned through the Boston Globe that more than 50 neighbors near the facility have signed on to a class action lawsuit alleging that the company spews noxious odors, particulates, and dust onto their homes. Furthermore, Olin College of Engineering installed air monitors in Gibson Park in Revere across from the facility and found that not only is pollution coming over from the incinerator, but ash is in fact blowing over from the ash pile. This is something neighbors have been saying for decades. This is, this information is especially concerning, given that our communities are located in a flood zone and have flooded as recently as December. Mass DEP has consistently said that since the ash dump is located in an area of critical environmental concern, expansion of the landfill would violate this designation, and the landfill will have to close once it reaches 50 feet, which is expected within, I think, two or three years. However, we have seen recent efforts by Wind Waste to negotiate a host community agreement with the town of Saugus, which would allow for decades more of ash expansion. This deal would benefit the town of Saugus, but would do nothing for Lynn, Revere, and other communities that are equally impacted by this disgusting incinerator and unlined dump. So I ask Mass DEP to please maintain their commitment to closing and capping this dangerous dump, which represents a threat to human health and the environment in already overburdened communities like Lynn. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, I see in the, in the chat would be Cindy.
Hi all. Cindy Loopy, New England Director for Clean Water Action. We also are going to be submitting written comments, but there were just a few things that I wanted to emphasize today. First, just a huge in recognition of how significant these regulations are and hope that, you know, together that that we can really reach the true potential and the, you know, the spirit and the, the goal of these regulations, which would mean true protections for the most vulnerable communities in the state, those that, you know, hose low and moderate income families, BIPOD populations, and all of the health vulnerabilities that that come along with this. The qualitative factors that are included in the draft rates, you know, things like poverty levels and, and, you know, the socioeconomics of a community and housing insecurity, food insecurity, chronic illness levels. Those are the things that, in combination with added pollution sources, make communities much more vulnerable. I think we saw this dynamic with the COVID epidemic, where communities like Chelsea were hardest hit. So it's our, our hope and, you know, our deep appreciation for folks at DEP for working so hard on this, that these regulations will ultimately enable us in these most vulnerable communities to say no to any further pollution, no to any further facilities that could add to pollution levels. I think ideally, we'd be talking about how to reduce burdens on communities like Lynn that Elliot was just describing. But at a minimum, we need to be making clear that there are some places that simply cannot bear further burdens. And the dynamics are such that these communities are somewhat disenfranchised and don't have the same access to power and influence that, that wealthier and better connected communities have. So these are really entrenched dynamics and give DEP and our state decision makers so much thanks for moving these forward. So I think, you know, the biggest thing I want to emphasize is that there truly are some communities that should be off limits for additional sources of pollution. And it might be helpful to have that explicitly stated at some point in these regulations. In addition, really appreciate that issues of air pollution from the transport sector can be included. I think if we look at communities like Chinatown, if we look at communities like Fall River, like Springfield, where asthma levels are incredibly high, and there's traffic hotspots, together with conditions of health being generally degraded, that that's incredibly important to capture in a review. Also, issues of tree canopy and, and, you know, exactly what the local conditions are in terms of open space and the ability to improve resiliency and reduce heat island effects, you know, together with with all this pollution. So just wanted to, you know, wrap up by saying thank you. And, you know, these are such critical issues. We really are excited to see states like New Jersey and Massachusetts moving forward, and we'll be submitting further written comments. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, and that next is Catherine Walker.
Hi, thanks very much. One moment. Yeah, my name is Katie Walker, and I'm providing these comments in my capacity as a senior fellow at Conservation Law Foundation, but they're based on my many decades of experience in environmental health risk assessment and air pollution epidemiology. I want to echo the comments of others and congratulating DEP for undertaking this difficult task of, an important task of defining methodologies for cumulative impact assessments. I know how hard it is. It's been the holy grail of the risk assessment community for, for many years. I note, however, that, you know, the DEP's regulations rely pretty much on conventional risk assessment methods for cancer and non-cancer risk, and, you know, on comparison to existing guidelines and air quality standards. And I think we know, as people have been saying here, that that doesn't in of itself really represent, or in a, particularly in a quantitative way, what a cumulative impact assessment really is. And I think it's totally appropriate to have started with air quality, because I think there are enough issues there to deal with, but they're important stepping stones to taking into account other sources of exposure as well. So, but we have particular questions about how the cumulative impact analysis will ultimately be accomplished, evaluated, and taken into account in decisions. So I'll provide some sort of overarching comments here, but we'll be submitting more detailed comments that I hope will be more useful to you in the future. So just walking through some of the sections of the report, I think, you know, the collection of indicators in Table 1 was a reasonable first step. How they're used is ultimately the real question. And, you know, as Sonia noted, I mean, these analyses are often quite complicated to do in many ways. And so I think to make it easier for all applicants and to provide more transparency and consistency for evaluations and decisions about cumulative impacts, it would be helpful if DEP would undertake a more complete assessment than they have to date of the indicators, the correlation structures between them, how, and so give some better sense of how individually or collectively they might modify the impact of exposures to different air pollutants, because they're not all just additive, and it's not always clear how one would take them into account. We're also curious and unclear about whether DEP would use these indicators to compare and rank communities in the way that's New Jersey and California are currently doing. I mean, for example, to identify communities who really are at the top of the burden level. How would these indicators be used? How would they be used, for example, and how is MEPA, for example, going to be addressing questions of what constitutes an unfair or inequitable or disproportionate sort of level of burden? For the evaluation itself, noted that the section calls for evaluation and description of how criteria air pollutant emissions could affect existing environmental public health and public health conditions in nearby communities. One question was really, does this, is it just criteria air pollutants, not air toxics here as well? And here's again, an example of where a more detailed assessment of the indicators would be helpful to clarify how the indicator data would be used either qualitatively or quantitatively to characterize what we mean by a cumulative impact. How do levels of criteria pollutant, for example, contribute to the existing health issues in a community? Or how are the effects of air pollution modified by different indicators that you have already by socioeconomic variables, for example? And illustrative case studies would be super helpful here, I think. And there are some criteria pollutants like PM 2.5, for which much more substantial data exists that you could give as an example. In Section H for the Department Review and Decision, it seems that the, from the air quality and health assessment standpoint, the only specific quantifiable requirements that needed to be met under this section were the ambient air quality standards, the cumulative and cancer and non-cancer risk limits. And you know, we know from a number of studies have been done, not only in Massachusetts, but around the country, studies that do estimate population impacts of air pollution. These are things like regulatory impact assessments, burden of disease studies, other impact studies of traffic, show disparities and impacts amongst communities and in EJ communities in particular at levels below existing standards. And much of Massachusetts is already in compliance with the NACS, and we're, I would like to have clarification about how EP, how DEP would address disparities in communities below the NACS or below some risk levels, particularly, again, how do the indicators and these sort of assessment of existing community conditions play into these kinds of decisions, even in communities that are maybe meeting existing standards or guidelines? And finally, I just wanted to praise the decision to include a cumulative impact analysis review of the regulation. It's a critical thing that many regulatory efforts do not do. But I want to encourage EPA, sorry, DEP to define early on and a priori the key questions you're going to evaluate, so you can set up the analytical frameworks and the data to be collected. Because too often, these regulatory reviews, if they're done at all, are done as an afterthought to the end and really provide limited insights. So for example, how the Table 1 indicators performed for identifying communities most at risk and for supporting the cumulative impact Um, so for example, how the table one indicators performed for identifying communities most at risk and for supporting the cumulative impact analyses. California, not long after they first developed their CalViro screen. Did a sensitivity analysis to choice of different. Um, indicators that I think helped them assess the robustness of their, their system for identifying communities at risk. Uh, and ultimately how these regulations or the interventions or mitigations proposed really improved air quality or health conditions in these. Um, disproportionately affected populations. Again, thanks very much and we'll be submitting more written comments.
Thank you very much for your comments. So, are there further?
Yeah, I'm not seeing, yeah, I'm not seeing any um, anything in the meeting chat or any hands raised at this time.
So have we missed someone who wishes to testify, who hasn't testified? Even if you want to unmute yourself and speak up. If we have overlooked you, I. I'm just checking things. I'm not seeing one there. Is there anyone who is participating by phone?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not seeing anybody, um, any participants who've joined by phone.
I'm sorry, I just lost the slide. Okay, well, we're gonna wait, um. Uh, a few minutes here and make sure there isn't anyone else or. Um, anyone changes their mind, so. Uh, we're gonna wait just a few more minutes. Before our final remarks, just in case. So if you bear with us for a few mo- moments of awkward silence. And just make sure we haven't missed anyone.
Looks like we have one hand raised. Uh, Sue.
Very great. Yes, go ahead, Sue. Please let us.
Thank you. My name is Sue Swanson. I had not presented, prepared anything. But since we have time, I thought I would just say thank you for this opportunity. I am a member of Mothers Out Front. And also very involved with several faith-based groups that are environmentally and climate conscious and. I think that cumulative impact is so important and we've certainly learned that from COVID. The communities, the groups that were most, that most suffered were those that had already been suffering. And so thank you for, for acknowledging that importance. And thank you for listening to the people who have frontline experience with this. I um, am very grateful and look forward to definite improvements in the way that we can move forward. Again, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, again, we're still going to wait a few minutes after the last speaker. Um, oh, here. Uh, send a new person? Yes, Betsy Sowers. Go ahead, please. I think you're still on mute. We can unmute you if necessary.
I got it. I, I clicked it and it didn't do it for some reason. Sorry. That's East Sowers. Um, I'm the Environmental Justice Point of Contact for. Four River Residents Against the Compressor Station. Uh, and Minister for Earth Justice at Old Cambridge Baptist Church. And I'm planning to send, I, I didn't prepare anything written because I'm, I mean, to speak because I was gonna. Submit written comments, which I will, but I want to just um. Second a couple of things that a couple other people have said. Primarily the need to really look at all of, all of the pollutants of every kind that are impacting. An area and also all of the facilities. And to have that a priori. Um, part of the regulations that say, you know, we already know because we have studied. Uh, how many pollutants there are and how. Uh, because of the social factors of the EJ communities and all of that, that these communities. Should not be burdened by any additional facilities, period, and not just wait until there's a proponent. To, to look at it. Um, and I wanted just to give quickly a, an example. Because one of the concerns that we've had down here in the Four River Basin is about having. A chain reaction incident that could. Make the air. You know, even worse than it is because some, some kind of an incident that would spread from one facility to the other, because we have ten of them, just cheek by jowl down here. Um, and sure enough, as I think as some of you in DEP are aware, what was it, a week ago, Friday, two weeks ago now, maybe. Um, there was a fire at the Clean Harbors Facility. Um, on the Braintree side of the river. In the middle of the night. Um, we had a um. An inversion, coastal inversion, so that the smoke did not go up and we have video of it and wind blowing towards Weymouth. I had friends in North Weymouth whose. You know, windows were open as they were sleeping, who uh, woke up with burning eyes and sore throats and coughing and. Wondering whether or not they should evacuate them and their children. The next day when it rained, there was black ash coming out of drain pipes. There was ash on people's homes and cars. The five, I, four or five um, tractor trailers that were sitting parked that uh. Caught fire over there and they were only two feet apart. They were, I believe, something like sixty feet from the nearest sit-go tank in the tank farm next door. Uh, and if that fire had spread over there. We would have had more to worry about actually than just air pollution into Four River Basin. So. All of that to say, you know, please look at everything and please. Please put that a priori thing in, in the regulations that. Um, some of these communities. Uh, you know, enough is enough, enough is enough for that. Uh, I do commend, I like others have said, though, I do want to commend you all for the, all the work you've done. I've been to most of the. Uh, the events that you had for folks as, as you were putting these things together and I really do appreciate it. And I just hope that no other community has to go through what we went through in our air, air hearings where. Evidence was presented of benzene toluene, want, toluene, one three butadiene and more. Uh, all being above acceptable levels already. And yet, Enbridge was given a permit to bring in more pollution because the DEP was not required to consider what was already there. And I sat in those hearings and it was like something out of Kafka. So, so, yeah, deep appreciation for making the changes. Um, and I'll put more in writing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. So is there anyone else who wishes to testify? Again, we'll still wait a minute or two after the last. Person, just to make sure that everyone has had a chance. Yeah, I don't see anyone else identifying themselves who wishes to testify. So I am going to um, thank everyone for their testimony. And um, uh, I want to thank each and every one of you, as well as those who have attended this remote hearing. Without testifying, all the testimony from this hearing will be considered before Mass DEP finalizes the proposed regulation. After the public comment period closes at five PM on April seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. We will review and take under advisement the comments raised during this public hearing prior to issuing the final regulation amendments. When the final regulation is issued, it will be posted on Mass DEP's website. We will notify um, all the parties who have participated in the public hearing process when the posting is completed. There being no further testimony, I will hereby close this remote hearing. At officially one forty-six PM on March ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Forty-six PM. Thank you very much all. Hope you have a good rest of your day.